Okay.
Okay.
Call the Senate, go for special counsel week fifty seven point three, order please stand for the fight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice first and all. Okay, like to, oops, don't, don't, don't knock on that, that's, yeah, okay, there we go.
Excuse me.
All right, we're back on, on line. Uh, like to note that we have three council people here tonight. Bob Strom is not here, and I don't remember Bob.
Strom is here.
We have all council people here tonight. And Steph John Light, Denise Beeson, that kind of vacation day, so she is not here. Uh, so talk slowly tonight, because I'm going to take notes in these sergeant cases. So, had the agenda, have this, no questions or discussion, I'll air can a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion here for the agenda. One second, Morgan.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Thank you. Okay, uh, first, the mayor's report got some good stuff that came up. Uh, we've had, the sidewalk has been completed, and there's been some discussion over cost of the things. Uh, right now, the way things are looking, we might overrun the budget by about five percent. And I gave you a analysis sheet that, I'm going to film it on here, that I had done. It's a question of, did the contractor get paid for all the work he did? Uh, contractor gets paid by what he accomplishes. The engineer gets paid by the hour. And we had some problems with vandalism, had some problems with the contractor not being as up to snuff on Washington DOT rules that they might have been, and it caused the engineering costs to go up. Uh, the actual construction costs are coming in a little under the estimate, and, but the engineering costs are over. All told, it's going to be somewhere between, looks like two to five percent over. So, we're negotiating that. Uh, excess money, the city sponsored foreign, come out of the capital, uh, a capital fund three or more. So, anyway, so that was, that's the letter that I, we went to have a big meeting, everybody talked, and then I summarized where I thought we were, and measured the cuts, and so forth and so on. So, that's going on. I offered to try to reduce engineering costs, I offered to take over the management of the project, and the Washington State Department of Transportation did not have this kind of opinion of my project management skills as I do, and they declined. So, we're continuing to have the engineer do the last of the contract negotiations. And then, another little thing, let's pull this up, this is fun. Got an email today, and probably a lot of you did, on Reader, what's happening now, uh, they're, they're going into their phase one project, which is work going to be doing in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. It turns out, it's in the vicinity here, where the orange is. There is a piece of property that the county bought on May Creek Road, four fifty ninth I believe, uh, which is seven to nine acres, or something that, that's going to be a trailhead for into the Wallace Falls area, uh, and out into the equestrian area. And so, they'll be working on, do the initial development of that. They're going to put a couple of bridges up, uh, in this area over here, if you can see the cursor, uh, and, uh, for, uh, mountain bikes and equestrian. So, it looks like that's going to be moving ahead. The red down at the bottom is the motorized stuff they've already been working on, they've opened a couple of trails. So, that project is moving along in good order. So, and I don't have any special information on it, outside of what, you know, Reader, what DNR sent. Okay, that's it for the mayor's report. John, you got your thing reported?
Yeah, I had an interesting day. I worked most of the day with the Snohomish County Fire Marshal. And we started implementing a program of Snohomish County, doing the fire inspections on businesses in town. We did five today. And things turned out pretty well. It was really interesting to watch how the Fire Marshal works, and was very polite, and, uh, he educates business owners as he goes through their business. And, you know, the reception was pretty nice between the business owners and the city and the Fire Marshal. Did the three buildings that the city of Goldbach, this one across the street and up above, and there's some items that we have, it's also just like every business in the city of Goldbach would probably have to do. And, uh, he's taken his reports back to the office to finalize them, and they'll be mailed out. And usually, uh, I can't pronounce his last name.
Gary Von Treger.
And, uh, yeah, I don't care either, I don't want to say Mr., Mr. Whatever. But, uh, and basically, there'll be a thirty day window for the people to make those improvements, and he'll come back and re-inspect. Unless there's a business that has multiple items, that's going to take a while, that appears that, excuse me, you know, if it's life and safety, that'll be dealt with right away. But, you know, that thirty day time period can be extended, in some cases, too, with reason. Uh, it was really interesting. Next, who brought this in?
Okay.
Nothing?
Thank you. Hey, guys? We've had a, a little bit of luck, and some things are, are some successes, I should say. Um, had a, uh, young man pled guilty this last week to a burglary from December. And so, uh, he's an adult now, but he was a juvenile at the time of the offense, and so it will be, the sentencing portion of this and all that will all be carried out with juvenile guidelines. Um, the, uh, the rash of burglaries we had, I call them a rash, to me, it was a high number. For such a small town to have so many burglaries in town, that seems to have just come to a screeching halt. We had a couple of burglaries reported since then, but they were known, that the homeowner knows the person that did it, and the person that did it has, at times, had access to the homes for limited things, and so they're specific, that person against that person, and not somebody that's just going around randomly hitting targets, and so. But the one of, the, as far as the random ones that we had, we had one person sitting in Snohomish County Jail, and he's been there for just about almost three weeks now, and the burglaries have just stopped. So, that's been very nice.
That's the same individual as you spoke of first?
Sorry?
That's the same individual that you spoke of first?
Yes, yes, yeah, that we had just, just identified and picked up, and, and since we have had him in the jail, we just have had nothing. So, um, so that's been a big relief for us, and hopefully for people in the community too. So, um, I have a lot of traffic complaints, especially as the weather's getting nicer, um, and the biggest issue in town right now is the stop signs. Um, and it's not the California stop, it's not the slow down to an almost stop and look and proceed, basically safely, it's, it's the people just blowing right through them with absolutely no regard for them. And so, um, I'll be talking to our traffic enforcement sergeants, unmarked cars, or preferably even the motorcycles, and we'll ask them to come out and do an emphasis patrol or two in the city, um, just to kind of get, uh, get the, that problem back in line. So, there's been a little more to it than that. We've had issues with folks that pick up at the school that swerve across the oncoming lane to grab that parking spot on the wrong side of the road before, before the car that was going to take it does, and, and things like that go on too. So, it's been somewhat significant, the complaints we've had, and, uh, so we'll get them out here, I hope, and my guys and I'll try to do it as much as we can too. It's difficult to do out of those big trucks, because they just, they just stand out, you can see them from so far away. So, um, get some motorcycles out here and, um, see what happens. It's just, every once in a while, we have to ride a few tickets, we try to build it out if we can, you know, just want to have a circle. So, fairly strict enforcement, I think that's where we're at.
Thank you. Benson, Dorothy, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I can think of something, maybe.
No.
No, thank you. No.
All right, now it's time for council comments, so, uh, we'll start with Kent.
I have no comments.
Davey?
Leave it or not, I have no comments.
Okay. Anna?
Nothing.
Well, leave, that leaves you.
Well, I do. The only comment I have is, I was wondering if, if maybe it's his unfinished business or new business, is Sig, Sig or Talbot there?
Oh, we're, that's on the agenda. We'll cover that as part of the agenda down at the bottom.
Oh, okay. That's the only comment I have.
Okay. Okay, we're ready for citizen comments. Do any citizens wish to make a comment? Going once, twice, three times, okay. Well, we have John Galt here, he's the guy that we have a contract with to be hearing examiner, and, uh, we've run the contract to our insurance carrier, and they asked for some insurance changes, he's agreed to some, and substitute to something else, so that's all taken care of. I left you a packet of information that I got on, that I got on him from, from Google, and so he's up here, so why don't you step up here and introduce yourself? I think you've probably already introduced to all the council people. Mr. Strom?
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And I give everybody else more paper.
I'm John Galt. I've provided hearing examiner services for a variety of jurisdictions in the greater Puget Sound area for almost thirty-five years now. Twenty-two of them with Snohomish County, and then various numbers of years with a whole host of other cities. I have been under contract with the city of Goldbach to be your hearing examiner since two thousand, although probably most of you don't even know that, or didn't until recently. During that time, I have had the privilege of hearing two potentially dangerous dog appeals for Goldbach, one in two thousand and one in two thousand and two. And that has been the extent of the work that I have been called upon to do for you folks. I understand that, uh, you're in the process of revising your code system, uh, so that war cases would go to a hearing examiner rather than to the Pining Commission for consideration. So, I suppose you'd like to know whether I've ever done any land use cases? And the answer is, that's how I really started, was doing land use hearings for Snohomish County. Preliminary plaids, variances, conditional use permits, code enforcement appeals, shoreline permits, all kinds of, of land use matters. Over the years, I've sort of stretched the work that I do. I've also done business license appeals for a number of cities. I do personal property forfeiture hearings, as the sheriff's designated hearing officer, and as the designated hearing officer for about six different police chiefs, from Oak Harbor on the north to, to Volkarnation on the south. Those are quite different from land use, and, and, uh, hopefully, I won't get any of them directly from you folks, although maybe through the, the county task force, I might end up with a case that somehow started up here, but, uh, we just have to wait and see. I've given you this little two-page sheet. The, the mayor emailed me what he got off Google, it's kind of frightening to think what you can find out there on the internet. I, I, I won't say that everything you read in, in a Google page is absolutely a hundred percent accurate, uh, but I'm not going to deny most of the stuff that's written in there. What I handed to you tonight, I do take responsibility for, because I prepared this, so I, I will stand by these two pages. Uh, the top four paragraphs are a very brief biography of my background. The bottom half of the first page lets you know how I view the hearing examiner's job, and in a nutshell, it's to provide as scrupulously fair and impartial a hearing as possible. It's to implement the ordinances and the policies that you adopt, not to do things the way I want to do. I write my decisions based on what the city's ordinances and policies are, rather than on the way I wish maybe it might have been done, or could have been done. What, what I personally think has nothing to do with the outcome of a decision. And then on the, the back page, uh, this is a table that I made for somebody else a couple of years ago, um, and I tried to roughly update the numbers today, but it's a list of the jurisdictions that I serve as a hearing examiner, the types of cases that I hear for each of them, and the total number of cases that I have heard for that jurisdiction over the time period that I've served. Uh, so, for example, Snohomish County says thousands, um, and I mean that, I, there was no way when I did this that I could have gone back to figure out how many cases I heard in the twenty-two years that I was the county hearing examiner. But you'll note that I retired from the county in two thousand, so I'm not doing any work for the county now, other than the drug forfeiture cases that I hear on behalf of the county sheriff. The cities that I presently serve include Breyer, uh, where since nineteen eighty-five, I've heard about ten cases, so you can tell there's not a lot there that takes up my time. I am the environmental health hearing examiner for the Snohomish Health District, and again, since eighty-five, I've only had about fifteen hearings that I've had to do for them. City of Bothell, uh, is a more major client of mine, I've had about two hundred and fifteen cases to hear since nineteen ninety-two. But there again, I mean, you divide that over the, the time period, that's what, twenty years, um, that's ten, fifteen cases a year on average. Bottom line, when you get through all of this, uh, in a good year, I probably, without considering any work from you folks, would be working maybe twenty hours a week on average. So, I've got plenty of time to live up to the contract that I already have with you that says that I will hear whatever cases you assign to. Unless, of course, you start getting a thousand cases a year or something, and then, then we'd have a different situation, but I have the feeling that's not going to be the case. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, on anything at all that relates to hearing examiner work.
Counsel, any questions?
Hi, Alan. I was wondering, um, you know, if we're working on one of the ordinances, would you also advise?
Yes, to an extent, I have been willing to advise. Because the hearing examiner is not a policymaker, I have always told cities that have asked me to look at proposed ordinances, that I will not comment on the policy implications of what you're setting about to do. I will not suggest policy direction. That's up to you folks and your citizens to work out. Yes? If I'm asked to review an ordinance before it's presented for adoption, I will look at it from the perspective of a person who's got to work with it, who's got to be able to understand it, and implement it. If there's something in it that I can't for the life of me figure out, I'll tell you. If there's something in it that conflicts with something that's already in your code, I'll try to point those things out to you. If there's just some bad grammar in it, um, I will try to point that out, because unfortunately, lots of times, where you put the comma makes a big difference in the way an attorney or a judge will ultimately interpret something. So, to that extent, yes, I would be willing to do something. For most jurisdictions, um, I've done it gratis, no charge. If you ask me to review a whole code, then we'd have to talk about it. But generally speaking, if I'm sending ordinance, um, I'll say, when do you need my comments back? And I'll submit comments, usually through email, to whomever requested it. It would have to be an official request from somebody in the city, however. I don't work privately for any citizens.
Thank you.
So, um, it's probably not a real relevant question, but it's a matter of curiosity for me. In the dangerous dog cases, and the personal property forfeiture, since you're, you're interpreting code, what is it you actually rule? I mean, are you, you define what a dangerous dog is by code?
No, your, your code defines what a dangerous dog is. If somebody is served what they notice a potentially dangerous dog, and disagrees that their little fluffy couldn't possibly meet the criteria in the code, they can appeal it. When it comes to me at that hearing, the question before me really becomes a factual question. Did the action, or do the actions of little fluffy meet whatever your ordinance says is a dangerous dog? For example, in, in a lot of jurisdictions, uh, the dog has to attack or bite somebody unprovoked, so the question is, were they provoked? And I hear testimony and evidence on what happened, it can oftentimes end up being a he said, she said, in which case, I've got to try and judge the credibility of the witnesses. Personal property forfeiture case, that gets a little more complicated, because there are a number of grounds under which property can be seized by the police, but people can challenge probable cause for the stop, they can challenge the legality of the search that led to the discovery of the contraband.
Okay, yeah. Getting clearer. Any other council questions? We run sort of a town hall format here. So, is there any questions that any of the people in the audience have?
You have a question.
All right, I would like to caution the council, but, uh, John Galt is a hard case. Keep him following the law, that's the good news. The bad news is, John Galt is a hard case in following the law.
That's my concern.
Do you have one more question? Yes.
And it's probably my own poor preparation, but just which kind of cases have we hired you to do, all of these cases, or just?
The way the contract reads now, it would be any type of quasi-judicial matter that you want to designate for me to hear for you.
So, it could be dangerous dogs?
Yes.
It could be business license applications?
Yes.
I'm not sure we included dangerous dogs in the, now we can't find it. In the ordinance that we did, we defined what the hearing examiner does.
Right, my understanding was it was land use.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty.
But is that what, or is it limited to that now, or?
Well, it's limited to what the ordinance says.
Okay.
And, and I don't think we have stuff like dangerous dogs. We have not had a problem of, well, let's be honest, we won't have one either. And I just don't know off the top of my head what the appeal process is for dangerous dogs. That would be in our animal control ordinance.
Right.
If I could interject, twelve years ago, it said, a hearing examiner would hear it, because that's.
We, we totally.
That's how I got into all of this in the first place, was you had a dangerous dog case, and I was asked to come up and do it.
We re-broke the animal code extensively two years ago.
Okay.
To make it parallel to Snohomish County Code as much as possible, because we have county sheriff doing that, and we, we're trying to make it so when they step across this magic line in the dirt, that the rules don't change dramatically.
Understandable, yeah. There's, I would draw a distinction between what the contract that we have says I can do, and what the code says I'm authorized to do.
Hearing examiner can do it, yeah.
The contract just simply says that I shall serve as hearing examiner for the city on those cases assigned to him by the city. So, then you look to the code to see whether you have chosen to assign a certain class of case to the hearing examiner to hear. If you were to change the code and subtract something, you don't have to change the contract. If you were to change the code and add something, you don't have to change the contract.
That's good. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we'll take a look at it, and we'll see. All right. Well, thank you very much, I think you've covered everything. And, uh, yes, sir, John, oh, John would like some business card from you, so he can find you.
I don't have business cards, because I've never up soliciting business, so I would be hit. How about? Do you have a card, John? Does it have an email on it? I'll send you an email when I get home.
Okay, we'll get a business card. We'll have to live long without you. There you go. Yeah, we've got an easy one coming up. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, folks.
Okay, the next item is the, uh, ordinance six forty-three, that's the compensation ordinance. That's the one we had the first reading on last week, pretty simple ordinance. Did anyone have any second thoughts over the master release? Well, I'll entertain a motion to make the second reading of proof order six forty-three.
So moved.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Thank you. First, the reading of ordinance six, second reading of ordinance six forty-three, and ordinance by the city of Goldbach, Washington, amending section two, point one four, point oh six oh, compensation of mayor and city council members in the Goldbach Municipal Code, GBMC. Okay, thank you very much, I'll get that out published, and we'll send the email out tonight before I go home, and it will shortly be a full ordinance. Okay, uh, fire station transfer, okay. We'll put this up here. I worked on a super scientific fifty-three, fifty-three page. Excuse me for a minute while I find the computer.
Forty-two.
Forty-two pages, okay. There it is, okay. We're just taking this time. And this is, I, I took an independent look at it, worked with Bob, worked with, uh, Chief Andrews, uh, did some analysis and looked for, uh, a technical basis for doing the transfer. And so, you have a copy of it, uh, you had a chance to read it, and now, uh, and the status is right now, uh, I read it by the attorney, Anne Marie, she said, took a look at it, said, send it to the state auditor, because the state auditor at some point in time is going to have to rule on this, and see if this does it, or would do something else. Okay, Lee, you were going to have comments on this, so?
Yes, I, uh, since.
Yes, I sent the, the fire district offered us the forty thousand dollars and the use of the building next door to the fire station for one dollar a year for thirty years. And the city council approved this. So, I would like to go with that, since we have approved it. I see no reason to change it right now unless the state auditor suggests that we do. So, if you've all read your, the addendum that the mayor made up, it makes good sense because he thought maybe the state auditor would require something like that. But until the state auditor does require something like that, I would like to make a motion that we go along with what we already agreed to and the fire district already agreed to. And we did send off and get some legal advice on that, whether that was strictly above board, and it was, it is, that we can lease that building for a dollar a year for thirty years and we can exchange the property and it will belong to the Stone-Homish County Fire District. Now, the only problem, foreseen problem, that our mayor has came up with would be the county auditor not going along with that.
Without any reason.
Yeah, but until the county auditor does not go along, he may go along with it too. There's just as good a chance that he will as that he won't. So, I would think that, I would, I would like for us to go ahead and consider the first agreement that the fire department made to us. And we agreed on it and they agreed on it, that they were satisfied with it. So, that's what we, I'd like to go with it.
And you make a motion to that effect?
Yes. Yes, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Nice. Okay, Lee, put it very simply. We're authorized by a straight reading of the RCW to do this. We have an offer, both the responsible councils, boards approved it. It should be straightforward and I probably overcomplicate things a whole lot, but I like doing stuff like that. So, anyway, if, no other discussion, all those in favor?
Wait a sec.
Oh, you want more discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Just a smidge.
Okay.
We have something going to the auditor's office, what's, does our decision know that? What is, what's the impact here?
Oh, I sent the auditor that, so I sent the city council, made a motion, approved the motion last night to accept the fire district plan six offer as written and as previously approved. Please evaluate this first and ignore my previous transmission.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, that would make no this second page here, the agreement?
It makes the whole forty-two pages no. But, I mean, it's there and it's, and it's there and if the auditor says, "No, the one-page letter is not complicated," then we can go here, but Lee has a good point.
I just have one observation.
Okay.
On page two of the agreement, number eight, the recovery of item six will not take effect should the fire district dispose of the property for the purpose of replacing it with equivalent or better fire facilities.
Okay.
And I would like to see that include some notation that those equivalent or better fire facilities would have to be within the city limits of Goldfarb, because I believe that would affect our fire insurance rates, which is a big part of this whole decision.
I thought we discussed that. We did, and I thought they wanted the freedom to pick what would be. And Chief Andrews mentions something that is not so much within the city limits, but within a mile of or a distance of.
That is correct.
Okay.
So...
So, I think, I'll let you speak, but I, I, I peg the opposite position. I think that what we have written is what we agreed to.
Okay, my, my concern is that it not impact our fire insurance rates. And if Chief Andrews has decided or said that the one-mile radius is sufficient to the fire insurance issue.
So, you're asking us to recheck that assumption?
No, if, if he says it's good, then I'm, I'm good with it.
Well, we went through that with the chief that was here.
I think that was the meeting I missed.
I think it was.
Because I'm going...
So, we went, we went through that and that was one of the, one of the conditions that our fire insurance did not, was not going to be affected by.
Okay, so when I put that in there, any, any transfer just would not adversely affect the homeowner's fire insurance?
Right.
Okay, so that's a better wording than within city limits or whatever, okay.
That's what the fire team agreed to and like Kim brought that up initially. Yeah, it wouldn't bother our insurance.
I think, can I speak to that? I'm Bill Teltz, chairman of the board of twenty-six commissioners. And I think the intent is the response time is really what you should be concerned about. And then our intent is to keep the station there. And that's really what the fire rating is about, it's the response time. It's not necessarily a geographical, you know, if there was a big grade you had to climb over, but it was only a mile away and it slowed the response time, then that would be, you know, something to consider. It's really a response time is the fundamental issue, not necessarily a geographic distance.
Okay. After we have the doctors, let's go to our attorney. And Bob and I worked to cover the three sigma possibilities and of course Anne Marie covered six, they moved on nine. And so, there'll be, we'll look at some of the wording that we talked about here and make it clear.
And Bill, we have Candy down here as one of the commissioners, she resigned, didn't she?
That's correct. I haven't seen that document, so it's, Kate Hayes has taken her spot.
I think?
Kate Hayes. H-A-Y-E-S.
Okay.
Kate with a K?
Yeah.
Kate with a K?
Yes, Kate with a K. She lives next door to you.
Okay, the...
No, right next to the city hall, across the street there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, still goes back, I'll hit the state auditor and see what they say about the fire district proposal and the council acceptance and we'll just go from there. And then we can work out any of these details as, will we actually get ready to make the transfer? I'm sure who was scrubbing details.
Rule of order.
Yes.
Finish out your vote before you commit.
Oh, oh, we'll have discussion, okay, we'll put discussion.
I should recuse myself from this vote?
Yes, why don't you?
Do I need to physically?
No, but is counsel order physically moved or just separate?
No, she just needs to recuse herself.
Let's take a wire, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you, Davey.
Okay. Let's go with the state auditor says.
That's what I thought you said, state auditor, not county auditor, right?
Good state, yeah.
Hopefully, that he'll just go on whatever.
Close the whole platoon.
I don't see anything wrong with it.
No, I agree with you and I probably overreacted with the defensive position that didn't need to be broken up. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the well four pump repair. This is John's play with.
There's been a lot going on. Basically, everybody knows well four has been down for repairs, maintenance. And we've been running with water, come off three. And when everything was hunky-dory, we were under the impression that's been going on since well four has been down. And last week, we had a citizen throw up on first Ave call with some concerns that something was going wrong somewhere because the tent over here was changing a little bit. And so, we started looking around and we had Kim from startup water come up with this pH tester and tested, or tested the pH and it was low, it was like five point four to six. And what happens when you have a low pH, if you have copper or lead piping in your house, it has a tendency to leach that lead and copper and will start changing color to your hair. As far as drinking, healthy effect, small, small time portions, there's no healthy effect at all. It's something that would have to happen over a long, long, long extended period of time. So, what we did, what we did, decided to do is call the health department. And we told the health department what was going on and they gave us some options and one of those options was to utilize PUD's water. We checked with them and their pH and their water is normally high. And so, yesterday, we started utilizing some of their water and some of our water to get the pH up above like six point five. And so, we went out to some pH readings and the pH is above the six point five. You know, and so, until we're ready to get well four back up online, we will utilize that method of raising the pH because other methods are very, very expensive. And also, the health department's notified. And like I said, it's not a health hazard for potable water unless it's over a very extended period of time. And so, what we did is I was talking with the mayor and we decided we were gonna post city hall and we're gonna put it in the paper just so people knew what was going on. PHs, one test that we're not required to do, we don't generally take PHs. They take PHs at the lab when they do testing for required contaminants and that sort of stuff at the lab. So, that's something that we didn't, you know, we just don't take PHs. But what we've done in the meantime is, I got a pH tester and we're just gonna start taking PHs even though they're not required. So, that's what's going on there. And what that will also do, the people in the city are generally the, you know, the older portion of town, they'll notice an increase in the pressure because we're on about twenty pounds. We usually run about fifty-five pounds, we're around seventy pounds. And if you go above eighty pounds pressure, that's generally when you want to start thinking about putting on pressure-reducing little valves in your house and stuff like that to keep from causing any damage. But we're below that eighty pounds. We've got a pressure-reducing station up on Gate Creek Road that's working, working, working really good. And so, the people on both sides of that, I've talked with them and we start blowing off water a lot, they're gonna be calling me, they've got my number, they've got city hall number, so we got, we got a good handle on that. You know, and the health department is very pleased. And, you know, as soon as we found out we had a pH problem, the people were, they helped. So, and well four?
Well, let me...
Yeah, I'd like to comment here, just to say, you know, mine.
Okay.
Because I was reading this notice and I, the notice kind of set me off. So, and, and, and what happened was is I didn't read some of the information. And I, you know, to me, you got a key point, you've got what you can do to reduce your exposure. And I think you should have another big bullet, a big one, what we're doing about it.
Oh.
So, people like me just don't get scared when you just don't read all the way down. Because when you put here, then we can, you're already blending water, you're already working on the solution. You've got a temporary solution, which is wonderful, and then a long-term solution, which is, you know, well, fine. But I think it would be a better message.
I thought they did, they notified everybody.
Oh, that's, oh, yes, I understand that, that's great. I'm just saying that we should have, it would be nice to have another bullet on there just to say, "Hey, this is what we're doing about it." I mean, it's in there, but you have to hunt.
Oh, okay.
It's in there, oh, yes. But I'm just saying, you know, make it a little bit more bolder.
Okay.
And that's all. Advertising, "Hey, don't worry, you know, we're doing this," you know, kind of thing.
Sorry. Okay. I'd like to point out that in the process, we're getting the water from PUD and they don't give it away. And for the amount of water we use per month, if it was all PUD, it probably costed an average twenty-two thousand dollars a month. We blend it well free and if we do a fifty-fifty blend, we're still looking at maybe eleven thousand dollars a month. This is a little, we have utilized as far now than the numbers I had to work with. But you still see that it's a fairly big budget hit monthly to use PUD. So, that's the segue now into John's talk about the well four. Okay, why don't you bring that up a little bit on there, can you do that? Bigger?
Okay, basically, what we, what we're at with well four is we pull well four out, you know, from the top of the pump to the, from the top of the mower to the bottom of pumps. And we had somebody come in and they basically cammed the well to see what the integrity of the well is, are there leaks in the pipe? You know, are there any major, major issues with well screen? Just anything. And the person who does this TV work, that you see a portion of up there, he is also a hydrogeologist and this is what he does for a living, you know? And he's a hydrogeologist for a living. And his comment was, when he was TVing the screen before we even cleaned it out, said, "It's a wonderful well, there's no problems with the casing and we're fortunate to have that well, period." You know, we talked about some of the issues that we've had in the past with the well and he says, "There's nothing out of the ordinary, this is a seven-hundred-and-twenty-foot deep well." You know, the makeup of the water is exactly what you'd expect when you have a deep well. So, he, he said, "That is a dandy well." And the person who drilled the well, he works with him all the time and he said that he's on his shortlist for anybody that would have drilled. He could tell him, I couldn't tell him, but he could tell him that that person does good work. But anyway, while you're looking, while you're looking at there, we, we, we've got a crane set up and what they do is they start scrubbing the pipe casing and they get down to the well screen. The well screen, the top of the well screen is about seven-hundred-and-five feet down below the surface of the water. And they scrub it and that's part of that screen that's scrubbed. When they scrubbed, started scrubbing the screen, you could actually see the volume of water increase coming out with a twenty-one-pound head pressure at the well. You could actually see it on the floor, where the floor of the well used to be half-wet. I mean, it was just, just thick in there. So, they got down about ten feet and it scrubbed clean like this. And if you go to the next slide, what this is, this is grit, this is sand. You know, this is scalings off the well casing. And through the twenty years that the well has been in service, this has basically settled to the bottom five feet of the well screen. And it was not possible to remove this the method that we were breaking the scaling and scrubbing the well screen. If they would have tried to remove this with that method, they could have made irreplaceable damage to the well, no more well. So, between the city and pump tech, the contractor and the hydrogeologist, there was determined stuff. So, basically, we have all the parts of all the well. We have the well casing... We have the well casing scrubbed. We have the top ten feet of a fifteen-foot well screen. So, right now, we're stopped. If you look at the original contract for the well work, it was forty thousand sixteen dollars and five cents for the work they had completed up.
Some of the items, let's put that...
In other there, it says this quote, "Does not cover any shafting or well-assembly parts, columns, sections if needed," you know? So, basically, this contractor covered everything except what you couldn't see under the ground, because nobody's going to give you a cost of something that they can't see. So, now that we have it all to our part, you know, it was determined as we started pulling, we pulled the motor off, and we started pulling the shaft out. And as we're pulling the shaft out, it's also in the casing. And we got down, and everything looked great. We could not figure out why we were getting that real big run with it. And we kept pulling shaft and pulling shaft and pulling shaft. And the top of the well pump bowls is two-hundred-and-forty feet down. You know, the well's seven-hundred-and-fifty, but the actual well pump, the top of it is two-hundred-and-forty feet. There's, these casings are ten-foot sections. And the casing immediately on top of the pump is connected to the casing on top of the cup. For whatever reason, over the twenty years, you could see where some of the threads were flattened out. And we think there was a little play in that bottom casing that's on top of the pump. So, we have to replace that one casing, and we have to replace one coupling. Or is it two? It might be two casings.
Two couplings.
Two couplings. We pulled the pump out, and the pump is, we had a picture last time we were here. The pump is actually, they call them pump bowls. You know, they're a big bowl on top of each other. It used to be twenty years ago, when we did some work, we reduced that to sixteen to reduce the pumping volume of that motor. When we pull that out, you can take the shaft inside the pump bowls and actually wiggle that shaft around. So, you know, the bearings and everything inside the pump, there's a lot, too much slop. So, that's where we were getting the run downs. So, what do we do? We've got to pump the, we can't put back underneath, it's just not going to work. So, I don't know if you've got this right here? There were some options, you know, of different types of pumps we could use and how long it takes to get them out. You know, twenty, the twenty stages like we had originally, fifty-nine thousand dollars. We didn't need it. The sixteen stage to replace exactly what we have in the well now, a brand-new one's forty-four thousand dollars, and that's out twenty-two weeks. We can't wait twenty-two weeks. Of course, now that we see that it's costing us eleven thousand dollars or twenty-two thousand dollars a month for water, you know, that, it's just, you just can't do that. And then we were looking at the bottom two types of pumps, and then we were looking at rebuilding what we have, you know? And what, to rebuild what we have is thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars, and that's three to four weeks out. And so, we made the decision, and I talked with Joe, the mayor, about that's the option that we need to do, you know? And they can rebuild that, and they can rebuild it, and it'll be just as good as a brand-new pump. We don't have to wait twenty-two weeks, and we get it back on system.
So, how old is this well?
The well's twenty years.
Twenty years. And you've reduced the screen usage by one-third in that twenty years, because you can't use the bottom five feet of that screen, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you have ten feet of screen left. So, in twenty years, that screen is not going to have five feet to draw from, because that process is going to speed up. So, so, you know how much time you have left on this well?
But what, here's more.
Yeah.
We're going, I'm going to talk about that part for you, Scott.
Okay.
Okay.
Because you're saying, what I heard you say was you had to stop.
Well, we had to stop what we were doing and regroup.
Okay, I didn't hear the handwriting.
I didn't... Pardon me for not being clear. Sometimes, sometimes what's up here doesn't come out. But we, we stopped the process to come to a solution between the hydrogeologist, myself, the mayor, and PumpTech. Okay, so we know that we need to replace or repair the motor.
Right.
And we would like the council to consider the thirteen thousand three hundred dollars and fourteen thousand around a lot to make those repaired.
It's a factor of cost and time. I understood all of that.
And we have to replace the shaft and the couplers. Now, that will take care of, we already had money for the new motor. That will take care of all the operating components of the well, from the top of the motor to the bottom bowl at the top. So, all the mechanical items are taken, I've talked about. Now, we get down to this five feet of dunk on the bottom. Rather than using the methods that we could have tried, which could have possibly compromised the well, there is a method, and it is using air. They actually go down seven-hundred-and-fifteen feet with a big, how many, fourteen hundred? I didn't get that number. You know, actually, what they will attempt to do, and the hydrogeologist and PumpTech, you know, they're under the impression, what they can do is blow this stuff out of the bottom five feet, and it will come to the surface as they're blowing the air in the well, and then it will just dissipate on the well floor.
They have to insert some tube or pipe to the bottom of that degree?
Yes.
And pump in air to lift it?
Yeah, to break it apart and build it up. And one thing you, I have a...
And there's a risk associated with that, right? And that is that the air, rather than come up, it could go out and you could perforate the screen.
They do not feel that that is the case, because you can't see it in this, we have video. You can actually see water circulating through this.
Yeah. Yeah, so, anyway, you don't have a lot of choice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and it's open, and now's the time to try it.
Maybe you get hurt.
Pardon?
It's a possibility that it might perforate the screen, but the guy knows what he's doing.
Right.
But they feel, they feel that this is not like concrete, because you can actually see water circulating through this.
Yeah, bubbles coming up, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, you've already, you've already put this on order, haven't you?
The parts, yeah.
The parts. I, I talked to the mayor, figured with time constraints, it was an emergency situation. And so, I made no moves until I informed the mayor, also.
Oh, but they're already in the works on this sixteen stage?
Ordering the parts.
Ordering the parts.
To repair for thirteen thousand or fourteen thousand.
Yeah. We want to get it back in running.
So, and then basically, not basically, if you look at the new proposed contract, what I did was I boxed in everything that is an addition to the old PumpTech contract, and it is the parts for the pump repair. The couplings and the column. And that brings their contract up from forty thousand sixteen dollars and five cents to fifty-six thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and eleven cents.
Before sales tax?
Before sale. No, that's, yeah, before sale tax.
That includes, that's everything, right?
Not yet.
Now, what we'd like to do, and I've been out of the office. The mayor has the costs more than I have, because I've just been scattered around. Once they get this out, we want to basically run that TV camera down one more time and see how successful that is. And that's an additional cost, I think, six, the mayor has...
They said the first...